Okay, ready, roll?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everybody. I guess we have a longish thing going on here tonight. We're talking the Rec Department first, right? Discussion. Ruth Ann's not here?
She said she'd be in a minute. Trevor's supposed to be here.
She's coming down the hall.
You're gonna start with that.
What's that?
We're gonna start.
I can go to the next one. We shouldn't take that long and then we may come up with another.
I don't know.
There she is.
Trevor.
Trevor, okay. The gang's all here.
That's like the most people we've had. Good evening.
Okay, we officially opened the meeting. Chicken and single, bad mouthing Ruth Ann, so continue.
It's in the minutes. It's not camera.
It's in the minutes. Not on camera? So I thought we would start the travel nights survey that we were about to do and send out to community members on the region activities at Mayor's Park. Trevor?
Sure. I'll hand you copies of this proposed survey.
Thank you.
But some of the context of this is we have a beautiful park, Mayor's Park. It gets some usage, but it's not like it's packed down there with... Sorry? Yeah. But it's not a patch of usage, you know, seven days a week or whatever.
Thank you.
So, one, I think as you... Oh, yes. There you go. Would you like a copy?
Sure. Just maybe we'll go on the record.
There you go. Do you mind if I stay here for a second? Sorry.
As long as you're good with Trevor.
Yeah?
Yep.
Sorry, I got all the way here and I realized I forgot my mask. Ran home. So the idea is that as Recreation Commission, I think we could do more to encourage activities down at Mayor's Park. And I think as you know, we've been trying to fix up the softball field. We cleaned up the backstop. We've been staking out the bases. I'm gonna get clighted, spread around, everything like that. And we'll be into fixing up the basketball court. But I think it behooves us to know what people are generally interested in. You know, is there... Are there sports that people would like to play, but we don't, you know, have the... You know, maybe we're just missing a handful of cones. Maybe, you know, marking out on the fence for, you know, certain distances would be helpful. Something like that. I think beyond that, if people show a lot of interest in a particular... Like if there's a lot of people who are interested in, I suspect, perhaps alternate frisbee or soccer, then we can also potentially schedule, like a time... We can say, like, oh, Tuesdays is pickup soccer. We could busy a time to get more people down there to play pickup. So with that in mind, we wanted to basically send out a survey to understand what people actually want to play. And so that's the survey you have in front of you. Two notes about it. One, I'm trying to list any and all sports that could be played in a field on the first page here. Two, when you open the survey, they are in a randomized order. So everyone would get a different order. It's a statistical sampling technique. So they're not necessarily in a meaningful order from this printout. I think last... The last recreation meeting, sorry, I wasn't able to attend, but we decided to strike punch football from the list of sports. So if you could just disregard that entry. So, yeah, the idea is like, we'd like to send, you know, a survey like this to members of the village in order to just gauge their interest in various sports so that we can make sure to, to whatever is great possible, provide the accommodation for that. So, I think that's...
Now, have you sent this out or not?
We have not sent it, no.
Can you just look up the Survey Monkey?
You know, I spoke to Trevor. Trevor asked me about that.
Yeah.
I hesitated because there's only one login for Survey Monkey. This is a simple survey and I think I can pull it off for you. For me to give you access to it, if you have access to all of the police survey members, too. And I don't think I can shut that down. I haven't done that much research on it.
I got you.
But I could look into it, yeah.
So I created this with just Google Forms, which is free. And we're not using any sort of advanced questions. There's no conditional questions or anything. It was pretty straightforward. My hesitation with using Google Forms as opposed to Survey Monkey would be the data. Like, I don't know if there's any concerns about, you know, the village, you know, keeping some sort of control on the data, the responses that people are providing. Two, I think Survey Monkey has some safeguards against people submitting multiple entries. Now, of course, that would be more of a concern for the police survey. I don't... Unless somebody was, you know, really wanted to mess with us and send, you know, million results for badminton or something. But I don't think... I think that's less of a concern for using Google Forms.
Trevor, give me a little bit of time to go through Survey Monkey again. You sent a question back off to them. If I could lock down the police survey so that it's not open.
Right.
The other good part about Survey Monkey is we have a database of people that we sent that to. And I don't know if that's how you have it as a... You know, a list of people you're sending this to, or are you looking for?
Well, for distribution, I was thinking we could send it potentially to the email server, the list server. Otherwise, you know, we could just post it on relevant Facebook groups, people congregate.
I think we're thinking that emails last, you know, the people who... I see Jeff shaking to say, yes. There's not... We got more people, I think, through... Basically, basically, you email us and I can come back to you with numbers because I hold it out so the...
It's a feeling about the commission that we'd really like to revive that field. I mean, years ago, Dave and Segal contained, you know, softball. It was very active. There's so many things going on out there. We have the basketball court. We're looking at the prices of repairing it. It's in disrepair right now. Jeff Amato has searched a couple of different options. And again, the survey's gonna help point us. We already have the girls... Little League... I dropped this one. You can hear me. I have trouble hearing people with the mask on. Girls, Little League softball is interested in using the softball portion that we used to use years ago and we still have the Halley, Marcy, and JV baseball on the other end. And we'd just like to see it used more. It's a tremendous site, you know, and it's been quasi-dormant for so many years. I don't know when softball went out, mid-'90s, but as a board, we'd like to really kind of rev it back up and be a bone to the village, you know.
It'd be nice.
Right, yeah. I mean, not only is it sort of a nice place that's not getting as much usage, it could be, I think it would, yeah, benefit the village and have people out and playing together, you know, playing sports, doing activities together, meeting each other, that sort of thing.
Even informally, it doesn't have to be... Just informally, that would be useful.
Well, speaking for myself, I think it's great. I don't think there's any... I think you need approval from the board unless there's resistance from someone. I don't think there will be to do that many...
I think we felt that before a survey, when we worked with Jeff, you know, to send it out to the... That we wanted you to know about it and kind of give your seal of approval so that you weren't cited. Somebody even said, "Did you see that survey?"
I think there was a question that I saw floating around about insurance coverage and something gets right there. Did we run that by Karen? Was it... It was an answer, was people had to sign a waiver if they wanted to play there. I remember seeing something like that.
Karen, that was an option. There's basically... There's... People are not covered by the village under work that's compromised there like that, obviously.
Because they get hurt on our property.
It's like if they get hurt on Site One.
I would think if you had a league or something, you'd probably need Karen's sake. If it was sanctioned or run by the village.
I think if the Little League softball group are there, then they're gonna have their parents sign some, a waiver. In fact, the Little League softball is already working with us as far as helping to send the expenses of revitalizing the softball field.
I think it's part of registration in Little League. You know, Little League has a church, but you still have to sign a... Parents have to sign.
Yeah, some of the language at the top of the survey, which I indicate that this is like, what sort of things would you want to play on your own time? We're not organizing a league, giving you a t-shirt, all that sort of stuff. And I think that's an appropriate little ground for the Recreation Commission. Like, let's try and make things available, but we're not supervising you. We're not responsible for you, that sort of thing. And, you know, if we specify some... You know, if there's a lot of interest in a particular activity and we can specify... This is, you know, looking down the road, but if we specify that, you know, X evening is pickup for soccer, whatever, we will make sure that's saying that this is on your own time. This is a pickup. This is, you know, the village isn't responsible for you.
I think it's the first step you have to take is a survey, see what the interest is and then go from there.
Right. And if we get five responses and they're five different sports, then we have our answer.
Well, I think we're all good with that. If you need help from Fran or Jeff with surveys, maybe the people I talk to.
Yeah, so, I mean...
I like volunteering, Jeff. It's a habit.
I think the whole thing is, oh, excuse me. I think the whole thing is to get, you know, if you do this and there is people who want to use it, is to be able to coordinate down there at different times.
Right.
Two different groups down there all the time fighting. That does happen.
Very good. So, I mean, as far as the survey, how about a follow-up with you about Survey Monkey? And if it's, you know, more trouble than it's worth, we can go with Google Forms.
A couple of days, you know, if you don't hear from me by... Over the next week.
Okay.
Thank you, Trevor. Our next topic is Recreation Commission has a shed at Mayor's Park. And of course, we talked about this at the previous trustee meeting. It has a lot of stuff in it and as Robert Downey might as, it's up to trustees to eliminate... To take care of or decide how to disperse a lot of the old equipment. All the Christmas tree lights from the old Amica's Main Street is still in there. So if we ask to use it, it's intended for this, which is for equipment from the Recreation Department. We really need to be able to get in there. We can't even get in there and find out what we have. Like, do we have a line marker? Do, you know, do we have bases in there? So I guess we'd really like to see the trustees work with us in removing a lot of that outdated stuff. Jeff Amato has volunteered to take pictures for you if you want to put it on, you know, for sale or anyway or whatever you want to do. So we want to work with Robert and Mr. Downey and the trustees to kind of clean that up so we can use it. Because if we're going to be... If the Little League is gonna be using it, then they're gonna want to start, you know, put some equipment in there. So we just want to move forward with that site.
So what I did just yesterday is I contacted Absolute Auction. They do a lot of municipal auctions and whatever. And so they sent the form. All you have to do is send it back. They come... We just need to send them a list of what we want. It could be anything. And just as the police elect your car in there, I believe I said that right? That's never been used. So all of everything like that. And there's a lot of stuff on Highway that if it's considered surplus, we have to... We can't just give it away or sell it. So having them take care of it, I think they don't charge us anything. They get a 10% or whatever. There's different percentages where it depends on what's being sold. They come down, they take photos, they take videos, and then they... And then they put it on. I think it's for two weeks and I don't know what happens or if you can put it up again after two weeks, but if they... Nobody wants it, I guess we could then at that point, you know, put it and add in the paper or whatever. But I think that's the way to go. So if we work with Robert Downey on that and kind of list everything that's in there, we can get him to come down and take photos and they'll do everything. I can send that... I mean, they'll go and see, they're really open to coming down right away if we wanted to, so.
Is it... If stuff doesn't sell, is there any, like, full-time free stuff?
I guess we... I guess I'll have to talk to Michelle about that, but if it doesn't and we may even attempt to sell it, I think we probably could. I mean, some stuff probably isn't worth it, but...
Okay. The next item that we submitted was the ticketed events at Mayor's Park. At the last trustee's meeting, I kind of gave an update of...
Could I ask you a favor? Could you sit up here and take your mask?
Sure.
Thanks. That way you'll get a little separation. I'm sure that means everything, but...
That's all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So ticketed events at Mayor's Park. I've already received, I think I'm on my third email from the person who's already applied for last, for next year to have a ticketed event at Mayor's Park. We definitely have to review the... We met as a commission and there's definitely parts of the park that we have to coordinate again and tell people that they can't use. Our concern is that they... It says on the addendum to the application that people using the Mayor's Park field cannot have vehicles on it if it's rained up to two days prior to the event and up to the event. That creates a real challenge because most of the vendors are bringing large volumes of liquid onto the field. So we would have to have a plan. If they couldn't put people on the field, how would they... How would the vendors go on the field? So it becomes a little bit more complex on a whole addendum piece. As we stated last time, I think I said it, you know, we make about four... A little bit over $4,000 in fees from the ticketed event that we recently had, but there are a lot of in-house costs that go out as far as the Highway Department getting things ready, us getting things ready. And so it becomes, you know, a challenge as to, are we charging enough? Do we have enough support or help during those days? As you know, it was a real strain on the commission because it was a weekend event and the Highway Department people aren't working on weekends. So I did a little bit of investigating and noticed that at Moskowitz, to have a wedding in one of the venues at Moskowitz, that's $9,500 to rent just one of the sections at Moskowitz. So I think we just have to be... Is it worth the aggravation? Once median parking goes in in front of Mayor's Park, that becomes another challenge for us. So I think it's something we found, have to make a decision. Are we going to do it? Is the addendum gonna be so long that you're gonna have to have... Have what you see with the next thing is the overseeing of approved events. You know, at one time when we talked about ticketed events, we talked about that there would be somebody from the village there the whole time the ticketed event was going on. We don't have enough people to do that kind of thing without hiring somebody to say, "Okay, it's your job." And then your $4,000 dwindles more and more. But it's a lot. I mean, I could probably go from Friday afternoon at 4:00 when I watch the porta-potties drive down Main Street with nobody there to supervise it to Monday when the 10 people came to take them. It's a long process.
So, so I think...
Yeah, John?
A suggestion and, well, not a suggestion, a recommendation also is if the commission could put together, you know, what they think would cost, like the work that... If Bugsy, you can talk to him, see how much it costs to like, you know, fence the infield or whatever, which also takes away from work in the village and shorthanded. I think the one thing is whether it's worth it or not, definitely. So I think we have to come up with... I think we need to hire a planner. I need somebody, and you guys, and I thank you for doing it. I did it one year or two, going down there. And if you don't have someone there, like little kids, you know, they'll be parking in the wet areas and they'll be parking on your infield and giving you an argument about that and everything else, so...
They're sleeping overnight?
Yeah. So we need to... We need to hire... I think we need to hire someone, see what that cost would be, incorporate that into a total fee. And if it's too much for people, it's too much. We don't have events down there. I mean, that's how I see it.
Just what I was gonna say, we need like an event coordinator. And like you said, tack it on at their price. I'm just guessing. We don't need to have us go down there and get abused or any village employee get abused, I mean, for nothing.
Your volunteer...
Like you said, you don't pay me enough.
It's a grave...
It's something that we have to look into for particular events is an event coordinator or whatever.
Somebody that's gonna be there the full...
Per hour or whatever.
Or whatever, when everything's being delivered. And also meet with them after you approve it so that you're not going down there and you're not the ones that have to go through everything. They have the plans, they go down there and they have the cycle and lay down the rules and regulations.
Yeah, so we're on the same page.
I think it's that. We did that. We do... But it says right on the publication in the addendum that the applicant will meet with the village and the commission prior to the event and walk through and make sure that everything, but then that day, things change.
Right.
I mean, they just, you know, once someone's not there, it's...
In terms of the role of the event coordinator, could you consider also including events at the pavilion?
Well, that would be the next thing, yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's a... And the thing that I kind of sent, overseeing approved events. We have the ticketed events, which really are the...
Bigger.
Just because we've just gone through it, it's very time-consuming if you don't have one. And I'm, you know, I still have my, you know, my fluorescent vest in my car from, you know, parking cars for the vendors. But overseeing approved events, so we have a various ones. You know, you have someone who's gonna be down there this weekend. We have two birthday parties at Mayor's, at the pavilion this weekend. One's gonna be from like 10:30 in the morning to 7:30 at night, okay? The next one is on Sunday afternoon for a couple of hours. There's a difference when somebody's using Mayor's Park for a party under like, no, under like 25 people and somebody who's using it for 100 people. The details are very different set of things, you know? And it's the opening, it's the closing, it's the organizing, it's the 10 people coming in, it's 10 people going out. So, right now, before we leave, we leave, we'll have to agree on who's going to cover Saturday and Sunday, the opening, closing, you know, the pavilion for the two parties that are gonna happen.
So Ruth Ann, can you also... Can the commission also consider what fee structure would be appropriate for the pavilion? It seems to me, as you just said, if there's a two-hour birthday party with 25 people and another birthday party for nine hours with 100 people and a tent, it seems to me that $25 or whatever the fee is...
Fifty.
Fifty dollars may be appropriate for a two-hour event, but it's certainly not appropriate for an eight-hour event for 100 people. I'm not suggesting that it be $500, but there's got to be some sort of...
Well, if we're going to say event planners are gonna be onsite for events, be there when the people come and open, not be there when people leave and close down, then we would have to kind of have a different... Have a different scale, you know?
But maybe what you do is you consider... Maybe what you can do is consider an hourly rate as opposed to a flat rate at all times.
I mean, yeah, that, you know, that's a possibility. I mean, and like I know the Saturday party is a family in town and it's the kid party in the morning, the adult party in the afternoon. So they're trying to, you know, do everything in one, in one shot. So, yeah, I think we can, you know, come up with something.
As we decide on what, who we need there, how much time that's gonna take, add that in, and that's gotta definitely be added. And this $50 isn't going very far. So asking someone $200 or something for a full day or 300, whatever, even if they're residents, I don't think is unreasonable. So I would look at...
Well, we certainly want to see people using it because it's a great facility. And especially the way things are now. And I know that we've, as we begin the school season, we did discuss last spring about having the scouts be able to use the facilities on a non-going basis. For free. Schedule for free. And also for them to have access to the restrooms while they were there for their troop meetings. So we certainly want to continue to pursue that with them because unfortunately, the way things are looking, it's not looking like that.
Just in thinking about it, I don't know what the cost would be for that, an event planner or an event coordinator, I'm sorry, would ask, but it's gotta be at least $20 an hour, if not $25 an hour. So if you've got an eight-hour event, the fee has got to be commensurate with the amount of time and the setup and the breakdown. Because somebody's...
They're renting a hall for an eight-hour birthday party. It's paying service bill now.
I think that's what you have to look into and that's part of it. If you look and see what rent halls cost and what they're offering and what we're offering and so that it's not, you know, we're not gouging people. You know, you have to have people down there now and someone's gonna be abusive, as we found out. And so I think we have to, you know, protect our interests down there and, you know, and find someone. Someone's gotta be there. You know, it's not the rec permission's job to be babysitting.
I know we're gonna do... We only have one other topic to discuss, but we can sort of... But overseeing approved events, I just want to remind you that the... It's posted on both Mayor's Park and the pavilion that they're open from 8:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night. On the longest day of the year, sunset was at 8:30. So at 9:00 at night, it is pitch black and there's, you know, I mean, pitch black. So I really think that the village might want to consider whether or not dawn to dusk might be a better, especially if we're gonna continue to see an increased use of the, of the section of the block. You don't want people there at 9:00 at night playing basketball in the block, so...
So I would, I would work with the committee or with the commission and come up with recommendations on that. If you think that the park shouldn't be open for events after dusk or whatever, or I don't know how you put it, you know, I guess after...
Well, the application says that you have to be, you know, the... You have to be over by the posted time, which is 9:00. But I think for events, for events that we schedule, it's one thing to have a family down there having a cookout of sitting at the picnic table with four or five people. You might, you know, but if you're having 40 people down there and, you know, so we may want to recommend or talk about that we don't have planned events for applications that go beyond 8:30.
Right. Yeah.
Or whatever.
Yeah, it could be a sliding scale. It's like, like you're saying, if there's five people or 10 people, then maybe 9:00's fine. And you don't have to open and shut it either, you know?
Is the basketball court lit at night? Or is it capable of being lit at night?
Not at the time.
Not, yeah. The flag, the flag is lit and there's some incandescent bulbs. Incandescent bulbs.
Maybe you could build a court around the flag.
I mean, the pavilion has some light, but it's not spotlights. It's just little, you know, they're all fashioned up.
I... There are two basketball courts that I pass when I'm driving, and both of them are lit at night and they are incredibly popular at night. The number of people that I see on the courts, but if ours isn't lit, it's not lit. And it's way in the back of the field. These are right on the sidewalks.
We're just trying to get prices just to repay, you know, we...
Yeah.
Ruth Ann, I can't imagine what...
Pardon is good. Pardon is a good first step. That's also basketball, for sure.
And then our last topic for what we wanted to discuss, and you may even have other things you want to discuss, was a trustee liaison. So that maybe some of these things, we can, you know, invite the liaison, come to a meeting or call into the meeting and we'll discuss them and then we can kind of have a more fluid conversation instead of coming and taking it. You know, we give our report once a month, but then there's stuff like the survey, we're gonna be redoing the application. So we're gonna separate the individual application for use of the pavilion with the ticketed application. So maybe somebody can run those by... Excuse me. Have somebody, the commission, can run that by, you know, would be helpful. And then when it comes before the board and instead of just a report, we can have someone to a discussion.
So you want a liaison from the board to go to your meetings or is that right?
Just be available, you know?
Okay.
I mean, tweets, when we discussed it all, I... I mean, Tweeps, when we discussed it at all, and I sent an email out to the trustees, Tweeps responded, and she's a former recreation commissioner, as well as Fran. And Fran, you know, you're gonna have a lot of free time in a couple of months.
But that wouldn't be a trustee liaison when she has a lot of free time.
And well, I just meant she could be a member, she could return, return, return to the committee.
There was, there was a trustee liaison, and I was on the board, I think actually it was, oops.
We can definitely do that, and if you need someone within the next five months, I'll come to your board meetings if I'm available.
So do you want to appoint a liaison, we can have one person to talk to, or do you want?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, there we go.
For me, maybe, you know.
Thank you.
So we can always just have a, a phone conversation, you know?
Right, okay, sounds good.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we were down, like a month ago, six weeks ago, we had a complaint between the pavilion and the bay, the vegetation was so high you couldn't see, couldn't see the river or the bay. So we as a recreation board went to car owners in the, from the town, they came down the big, I don't know what you call it, but they cleared it all out, I'm sure you've noticed it. I subsequently had somebody approach me about a similar situation in Dockside, between, you know, where you're walking, the river, that, you know, you can't see the river, I don't know how the village felt about maybe doing the same thing down there, if the town would come down and, you know, and kind of clear that out, so when you're walking through here, you can see, there's a neighbor, but, so you can see the river. I mean, it really looks nice, we have a few trees to take down, mulberry trees, and the tree committee already told us they're no good, but, you know, to get a lot of that vegetation down, I don't know.
I think we have to, Dockside might have to run that by Evan Thompson from the parks.
That's why I didn't know what to.
Yeah, I would, I would go to him. Also, I, they were supposed to, I mean, they've been threatening the shoreline revitalization.
Stabilization.
What is it?
Stabilization.
Stabilization, for a long time, which they were gonna take all of that out and redo the, like, area along the edge of the water.
Dockside's not pre.
No, I know, but I just wanted.
But I think John's just kind of shared that with you, so we can put the, put it back in.
Do we, no, we have someone who cuts grass.
No, this is beyond cutting grass, yeah. It's a lot of work. They need the big fresh or whatever it's called.
Thrasher or something.
Come down there.
Yeah.
It was, it, it was like, as I watched him do it, it was, when he cleaned that area up.
The whole thing, we cut that stuff, cut it out, then you probably start walking down to the end of it, you know, so you might have to check with the safety department, insurance department, you don't want anybody in the end of, you know, especially with the rock out there.
Right.
So this, the person you mentioned there, they're supposed to be kind of proceeding with that shoreline stuff and all?
What's that?
The guy you mentioned before.
Evan Thompson?
Yeah, yeah.
He's the, air take or whatever, the guy in the porch, he's great, I think.
Yeah.
I, I thought that the plan for stabilization had changed dramatically. Originally, it was supposed to be more riprap, and then the state decided to take a different course of action with it. I don't know what the plan is now.
I mean, you got a beak and waterfront, you know, I mean, that's a lot of long edge, I wish they would do something, not you guys, but I wish they were proceeding to get something done.
So who's gonna contact Evan? You're gonna?
No, we're not Dockside.
Oh.
I was just bringing it up today.
Yeah, I was just bringing it up, you heard that from a neighbor. Oh, what's happening?
Yeah, the people.
I like clear by health, you can hurt yourself, but with, with my own hands, I don't need, you know, you're a volunteer.
We have a volunteer over here.
And it looks really nice.
It does.
To go back to the ticketed events and stuff, or whatever we have down there, we have to have like either more, more of a deposit, escrow type thing for everything, so that we have something to hold over people, and, you know, when they say, no, we're not getting out of here, or whatever, or, or the damage being done, you know, we, we just need, we need to have money that we had, you know, upfront, that they can get back, and everything's fine, regardless of what it is, I think. If we're opening the gates and they're letting a car in there, I think we should protect ourselves. So I, I think that's one thing to consider, or what we can actually do if people, you know, don't want to abide.
A deposit.
Yeah, like a deposit.
A deposit.
And I do want to apologize, I mean, you know, I sat with Ruth Ann, and I think you guys have done a great job, I think, you know, I think the commission's actually doing what a commission should do now, I mean, really moving ahead a lot, so I really appreciate it, seeing it over the years, so, and what you're doing now in the survey, everything, I think is what we should be doing, and improving the parks and finding that. I think one thing that didn't happen before was budgeting season, you know, people were afraid to ask what they needed or whatever, I think when that time comes around again, you guys should get it together, and this is the wish list, this is what we need, I guess important, if we don't know what you want or we need. Sorry what happened, like, just, you know, this last event, you know, Ruth Ann and her husband down there, and, you know, when you're putting energy and stuff, it's extra energy and it's for free, and people abuse you, that is probably the worst thing in the world, so I apologize, but hopefully from that we learn, and we can put a moratorium on anything, don't, don't have any more events after these ones, until we get it together, you know, if you think there's anything that's gonna be a problem. As far as the next wine thing, I, I would definitely say we're not gonna talk about that till, I don't know, whatever you want to talk about, until you get everything together, you know?
I, I think.
Yeah, the one thing, you know, we, what we used to do, we wouldn't, over six months, we wouldn't, okay, and then it was over six mon, over six months, and that's, that's different now, because of, you know, the ticketed events.
Right, yeah.
So maybe that's something we gotta look into again, too, because otherwise, because the first thing this lady told me when we had a meeting with her, is I already paid for, you know, right out of her mouth, I already paid for everything, right? I mean, she was down there telling me what she was gonna do, and I said, it doesn't work that way. I said, you can't use the infield, you know?
Right, yeah.
And then it just, you know.
Well, I went down there the first year, and they had the car right there, and they can't park, they're parking on the infield.
Yeah.
And then they tell you to screech.
The mayor told me, the mayor told me. Yeah, she said, you said it was already done, use all this, you know?
Well, I think that's part of it, you know, if you have somebody who's there, who knows exactly that there is no, you know, change of thing, you know? You don't have to call the mayor, you know that, no, that's not true, and if you have a problem with that, then you can deal with the mayor after the event, not at the event, you know, because it's, it's just too challenging. You know, and it's, it is challenging, you know, when you see something happen and you bring it to their attention, and, oh, but it'll be all right, it, that's, I got here, you know? It's okay, he's just gonna.
I just have one quick question, because I think when Bruce was alive, Bruce Campbell, event coordinator, can it be a village employee or not? Something like Bruce resigned, I think you could do that.
Probably not, if you're paid, I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, I think.
With Bruce, you could, could it be, and serving that role and also be on the recreation commission at the same time, and that's why you resigned from the commission, is to take the paid role?
So it can be a paid employee and still be an event coordinator?
Yeah, because the one time, where it did the field, like Joe Russo, and he was gonna, he was gonna open up for, for these parties, so we didn't have to go.
You have to go to Jack.
Thanks.
Okay. You have the rest?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, you guys did a good job.
Really appreciate it.
Yes, and I'm happy to work with you.
Okay, next up is Share the Growth, baby.
Share the Growth.
How are you going, Jason? I'm feeling good.
How's it going?
Feeling good.
So should I just give a little bit of review of this old idea that many of you have heard about for a very long time?
I think you can cut to the chase.
Cut to the chase here. So the Share the Growth Putnam Sales Tax Proposal, just for folks in the room background, Putnam County doesn't share sales tax with towns or villages, and almost, about over eighty percent of counties in New York State do share sales tax. All of the counties around Putnam County do share sales tax locally, and I know that many of you have worked on this issue in the past, I know that on the town board, you know, Richard has worked on it, John Van Tassel, and so I guess cutting to the chase is what is new about this approach? One is the proposal, the kind of concrete proposal that we're putting forward to the county, which is that we are asking the county that they would share any annual growth in sales tax. So any annual growth in sales tax that they would share at fifty-fifty with local towns and villages, so in the good years, which they've been having more and more and more of recently, they would share that growth, fifty-fifty. And fifty-fifty by population with towns and villages is how the majority of counties share their local sales tax. And so there's a couple of things that that means, I mean, that approach means that, you know, you know, I've talked to almost all of the town supervisors in Putnam County, and, you know, I think everybody at first has some skepticism about this issue, and mostly what I hear is that in past meetings with the county, what the county says is, we already do a lot for local towns and villages. You know, we already backstop you on property taxes, and we pay your Metro North platform fee, and so the way that this proposal sidesteps that argument is that they would only be sharing growth in sales tax, so their budget would be kept whole, they can keep providing those services that counties are supposed to provide, but in the good years, when their sales tax is growing, they would share it back with the local communities that create that sales tax, you know? And so, you know, we did a little bit of an analysis, just, just how the context, not only is the proposal different, focusing on growth, which really gets around some of those old county arguments and keeps them whole for their funding, but the, the context is also different of their finances. So Putnam County, their sales taxes have been growing and growing and growing over the last twenty years, they've especially started growing in 2019 because New York State allowed now counties to collect online sales tax from tax-dodging monopolies like Amazon, finally. So we're now collecting online sales tax, and because of that, the county still saw their sales tax collections grow even during the COVID economic shutdown, when local businesses were hurting, so they still, they didn't even see a sales tax dip then, and so that's gonna continue, they're gonna keep seeing that boost from online sales tax collections, and the other thing that's changed is they're now sitting on a historic fund surplus of cash, so they've never had so much leftover money, and I think when we all on the Phillips Town Board are talking about doing things for the community, when you all are talking about doing things for the community, we're all searching for the money to do that, and the county's sitting on a historic fund balance right now. And so, you know, I think that the, the other thing about this proposal, besides taking a new approach, and besides kind of, you know, saying to the county, your budget's gonna be kept whole, you have a historic surplus of cash you're not spending, is that we're really trying to unify all the towns and villages in Putnam County, so we can speak in one voice, you know, regardless if it's Republican or Democrat. So, so far, the town of Phillips Town has passed the proposal, the village of Nelsonville has passed the proposal, you know, I, I hope, because many of you have led that fight in the past, that you would pass the proposal, and just an update, you know, I've talked to every supervisor in Putnam County, you know, Supervisor Hay, Supervisor Williams, Supervisor Schmidt, and Mayor, Mayor Shoning in the village of Rooster, and three of them are putting it on their upcoming agendas for resolution, so there seems to be kind of a unification growing, and I think that would also allow us to go to the county and ask for this in this context, and hopefully inject it into the fall races and conversation, because all towns and villages unite around one proposal, and it's not anybody's proposal. I mean, we call it the Share the Growth Putnam, so we avoid the politics, and it's just like a proposal that we unite around. So that's cutting to the chase, I will be quiet now, for maybe tenth time is the charm. Tenth time is the charm.
I'm, I'm all for backing you on it, and it happens, that'd be great, and my only skepticism would be that people would jump on board with us on the other side of the county, but that's neither here nor there, I think, I mean, we totally, I would totally support it, I don't see why we wouldn't support.
Jason, the table that you have here, population table?
Yes.
Are you gonna update that for the 2020 census?
Yes, now that that just came out, I will update that, I saw the villages are out, I don't think towns are out yet, but yeah. Well, I will update it.
I saw the Phillips Town, in Highland Current, I saw the Phillips Town town numbers, the village of Cold Spring, and the village of Nelsonville numbers.
Oh, I did not talk, I think they have the town numbers, I thought they only had the village numbers. Did they have the town number?
I think so, yeah.
So let's update it, so it'll be updated, and this, this, Marie, was just to give, so this was, this table was an estimate of what towns and villages would have received if this Share the Growth Putnam proposal was in place in 2018 to 2019, that's when Putnam County saw a three-point-two million dollar increase, so they collected sixty, what is it, sixty-four million dollars in all of sales tax, our money, local businesses collect here, and the growth between 2018 and 2019 was three-point-two million, if this proposal had been in place, and the county kept half of the growth, and the towns and villages kept the other half by population, the village of Cold Spring, based on these 2019 numbers, which need to be updated, would have, that would have brought in about twenty-eight thousand dollars, you know, in annual revenue. For Phillips Town, it would have been a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, and I know from the town of Phillips Town, that's a big deal. I mean, that's just a really big deal in terms of new revenues for us, so I hope, you know, I hope every town and village obviously has its self-interest in getting some of this money back, so hopefully we can unite and then figure out how to bring it to the county together.
So what would be the next step for us to do?
So I think the next step, very good question, would be to, you know, propose the resolution at the village and vote on it, and then I think in discussions with towns and villages, we're kind of hoping that by early October, we would know who's on board, and we would have a meeting of all the towns and villages that have passed the resolution to decide how to collectively go at the county with it. And there's already different opinions, I mean, some people say we should just do a big press conference, other people say we should bring it to the county first and propose it and see what is said, but I think that the hope of doing it by October is that it would become a question in the county races.
In the county?
In the county, county political races. You know, if, if we have all of the towns and villages in Putnam County having passed this resolution, then you can kind of ask the question of a county legislator running for office, do you support the Share the Growth Putnam resolution? That would bring money back to your home community where you're running.
So I am unfamiliar with county, with the county laws, who gets a say at a county level that this will occur or will not occur? Is that Mary Ellen only, or does the legislature?
I believe it would have to be done by the legislature, but of course.
That's very different.
Yes.
There's certain committees, it seems to me with the legislature, that there's certain committees that deal with certain areas, so I don't know if there's a group that does, if this is finance or all.
I think it would probably be the, I don't know if they call it the Finance Committee or the Taxation and Finance Committee, but I, I think it would be that committee.
Either, you know, one, two, three, send all of the other way, nobody else will ever get to it.
Yeah.
So if, if this, if it is up to the, if it is up to the legislature to approve this?
Yeah.
That would then not happen until after the vote, after the general election?
No, I mean, it would depend on the county legislature, if the towns and villages go in one unified front to the county legislature and to the county executive and propose this, and they, they, you know, this has gained enough momentum as to bring some sort of public pressure, they could put it all before the election.
But you said that you wanted it to be an election issue.
I mean, I, honestly speaking, I only think it gains traction if there's unity between towns and villages. towns and villages, if it becomes a public issue, and if it becomes an issue that candidates running for office are asked to know. But that's just my, you know, that's just, if the county suddenly decides they want to do this before the elections without that sort of pressure, then they decide to do that.
Just, just again, as I say, I am unfamiliar with the county laws. The budget for the county has to be passed in the November or December timeframe because it establishes the tax rate for that the county charges effective January 1st.
So I don't think there's any way this would affect this, you know, this coming budget.
So the 2022 budget?
Yeah.
Would not benefit or be penalized by this at all?
I'm guessing, and I do not know the answer to this, that they would have to have their budget, what, finalized by December 31st?
Well, think about the town, the town and the county running the same budget calendar.
Yeah.
Is the town, when does the town begin their budget discussion?
We're going to begin soon. I mean, we're going to begin in the next month.
Okay. So.
Internally.
So there's not a criticism?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's just, it sounds as if the, to get this, if the county decide, agrees with this proposal, it will be 2023 before any sort of funds would be reimbursed to the participating towns and villages.
So you're asking, you're asking a very good question, Marie, which I don't know the answer to because.
I don't either. This is not a trick question.
No, no, it's a very good question, because what the proposal's not doing is saying, split their sales tax revenue projection, right? They're going to make their projection of their sales tax revenue to base their budget on.
Yes.
And so they'll do that no matter what. We're going to say if the sales tax revenues come in higher than that projection that you base your budget on, that would be split. And so because it's going that approach, I have, I do not know if they can make the budget now, make their projections like they do now, but approve a Share the Growth approach and have that impact, you know?
It might be useful for your proposal to, to gain more traction.
Yeah.
To have an understanding of where this proposal might fit into the county budget discussions and the election.
I think it's a very good point, and I will, I will do that. That improves this strategy.
Yeah, it, it makes, it grounds us on.
Their, their, their process.
I'm in support, so.
No, it's a good, it's a good point.
But to set people's expectations for when this might, if, if enough support can be gathered, and if it is up to the legislature to approve this?
Yeah.
When might the villages and towns see any benefit from it?
If they went for it. That's a good point.
If I understood you correctly, this is talking about a surplus over their projection.
That's right.
So they can manipulate their projections so that there's very little surplus.
Yeah, but if they're willing to set their budget on manipulated projections, and maybe they are, you know, but if they're, you know, if they set their whole countywide budget on a projection that they know is an overestimate, then they're also playing danger with setting their whole annual budget on a fake projection that, you know.
Why isn't it, why isn't it based on the previous year's sales tax?
I believe what they do is they usually project a little bit above the previous year's sales tax, but some, some years they have such explosive growth that it comes in above that projection. And so that's, that would be the money that we would be going after.
So you wouldn't go after the increase from 2019 to 2020? In 2019, we collected $5 million, and then 20, so in 2020, if we collect $6 million, the increase is to $1 million. You're not going that way, you're going by what their budget, what their projection.
It's a good point, I mean, how we have been proposing it is by any increase between year to year.
Year to year growth.
Year to year growth.
So, okay, so it's not a projection, it's not an expectation.
Yeah, I mean, we have to look at, and, you know, I want to make the point here, I'm, I am not the one, I mean, I may have drafted the resolution, but I'm not the manager of this effort. I mean, it only works if the towns and villages that pass it come around one table and decide together what the best approach is. And so I just want to say, I'm not, I'm not saying, like, we will do this, because the supervisor Patterson.
Could say, no.
Could say, I have different ideas. Supervisor Schmidt and Carmel, who is putting it, you know, who is, who is there discussing, putting it on the agenda, but I'm not going to say, you know, I, I just got appointed to the board. I need to win the seat to stay there. So this, this will be a decision made by the villages and towns that pass the resolution.
Jason, one last question in terms of timing. The, let's say the projection for Putnam County for 2022 is the same as it was for 2021, and it's $65 million, whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the sales tax trickles in throughout the year.
Yeah.
At what point in the proposal would villages and towns see any revenue, or would it all occur at the end of the fiscal year, once the books are closed?
You're asking very good questions. I mean, off the cuff, I would imagine it would happen at the end of the fiscal year, because the county would want to protect themselves.
Yes, yes, exactly.
If there were, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think the main thing is, we finally have a way to say to the county, they've been, they've been always pushing back, saying, hey, if you don't want the local services we do for you, we'll pull them back. And that scares people off, and this is saying, you keep doing those local services, you have your whole budget.
By the way, some of the local services that they provide are required by law.
Exactly.
So, so this, this, making the villages whole on unpaid taxes?
Yeah.
That's the law. So, so I don't see it as a service provided by the county.
I know. That's like why I try to take credit for doing things as a parent, that you're supposed to do.
Or you like when you were babysitting your child?
Exactly. You're like, pat me on the back for that, but that's what you're supposed to do.
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome.
And I'm prepared a resolution for the next meeting. There is one way to force them to share sales tax.
What is it?
There's no city in the county of Putnam. If you have a city, then you have to share.
That is true.
Get a board on, get some people that want to put some time in. Two places have done.
You are, that is true, that is true. If we get a city in.
There's two, about two villages that did that, like in the state.
That's interesting.
One is upstairs, one is, I think, Rhineck or Bob's Ferry, one of the other.
Is it what exactly?
They were a village and became a city, and that forces shared sales tax.
That's right. That's right.
Sorry, they've raised my stupidity. It doesn't depend on size?
No.
No, not at all. Size, their population or size.
No.
Oh, how do you become a city?
I don't know that, and I don't know what the implication is, that maybe it's not good to become a city. I don't know what you have to do, but if you become a city.
Thank you, Jason.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. We'll push this along.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is our favorite, 50 Main Street, flavor of the month.
So, can I kick this off?
Yes.
So my name is Ju Hee from River Architects, I'm the founding partner at River Architects, and with me is the property owner, Laura Bergman, and our, my assistant Heidi Stevens, who had helped me just look through our records and helped me just look at the history of the approval process. And this is, as you know, it's 50 Main Street, and based on our last meeting, I thought it was important for me to review the history of the approval because, you know, for the public record, I, I don't want to be seen as if, you know, somebody who's tried to do something wrong. And so here I made a list of events that had occurred. I have one extra copy.
Thank you.
So this small lot, 50 Main Street, took ten months to go through the public process, public review process. So it took from February 7th, 2019, through December 10th of 2019 to finally get the building permit. So we initiated, initiated our application on February 7th by submitting the initial building permit, and on the same day, I believe, it was forwarded to the planning board. And we met with the planning board on February 28th, proposing the change of use from retail slash office to mixed-use cafe residential with an apartment. Now, on April 2nd, we met with Board of Trustees on a workshop basis. We had proposed to purchase 250 square foot of village property along the full width of the property line for the front porch. I believe the, the result was that we should just formalize our application and, which is submitted later. So that was April 2nd. On April 25th, we met with the planning board. We noted at the meeting that the village board will allow purchase of minimum square footage of the sidewalk required to accommodate the front entry. The apartment will become a short-term rental. I'm sorry, so.
Julia, on April 2nd, the, it says the board didn't approve the sale, and River Architects will redesign the porch, which, what porch are you referring to there?
Along full width of property line for front porch. So that was when we had proposed to build a front porch on the village patio.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
But that wasn't what was, that wasn't what was submitted to the building, that hadn't gone to, okay.
Yeah, so planning board, let me see, I'm sorry, on 25th, we met to discuss, I said the village board will allow.
So in the initial planning board meeting, what, what plans were shown?
In the, the initial planning board? On the, I'm sorry, which date?
On the, the initial, the first planning board meeting, February, I guess, 28th, or the 28th, yeah, it says.
That one, we had proposed, we had shown the porch on the, on the sidewalk.
But there, and, but that was, okay, so you showed it on the sidewalk, which was village property at that point?
Right, and we, we were trying to figure out which board to go first. We had danced around who to go first, and so planning board had directed us to go, well, I, I can't remember exactly, but it was the.
Is that common to, to submit a plan that has a building on someone else's property and go to a planning board about that?
That was a mix-up at the beginning. We didn't know who to go first, like who the leading agency will be and.
But it's not, no, I'm asking if, is that usual to go, I mean, if you're planning and you're bringing something to the planning board with, for a permit, would you show something that's being built on someone else's property if you don't own that property? And then?
But we had informed that we were proposing to buy that property at that.
So I guess that's my question, do you usually bring something to a planning board and ask them to review it when you don't own property?
But all of this, we were.
It's backwards.
We were following the direction that, so when we first submitted the building permit, we were following the direction of the board that they were referring to. So we were referred to the planning board.
But the building permit you, it submitted, did that have a drawing or that had to have what you were building that was then brought to the planning board? For the permit, it would go to the building, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would go to the building inspector, and building inspector would say, you're going to have, they would, you know, then refer you, deny it, refer you to the planning board or ZBA or whatever.
Right, that was actually.
So what plans would, it seems, I don't remember seeing, and I'm kind of familiar, I don't think people usually submit a plan that shows building on someone else's property.
Well, I, I don't, I have to go and dig on the exact same, I mean, I'm sorry, the drawing that was submitted on February 7th, but that was, that was for denial. That was for denial so that we can be referred to the right agencies. And because it was kind of intertwined, we were told to go, you know, either simultaneously, or they were trying to figure out which board should be reviewing our application. So we were sent to the planning board first. I think, I think that had to do with who was, who was available immediately, I think, at that point. I don't, I don't remember, but we were referred to the planning board first.
But again, wouldn't you, I, I, I just, I'm sorry if I'm hung on this, but it's like, I, you know, you're going to a planning board with a plan, and how can they approve or disapprove or do anything besides you saying, you don't own this property? You can't, you can't come up with a design and, and bring it to us, and we can't forward it to anyone, because you don't even own that property.
Right, we didn't design a full building, it was just a concept. It was just a concept to be referred to various boards at that point. Okay, so we, we didn't know who to approach first, and so we, on February 7th, we had submitted a drawing for building permit denial in order to be, you know, referred. We knew we had to go through HDRB.
So when you went to the, built for the building permit, I, I don't think you go to a building permit with a concept. You go with a plan.
We, we were asked to submit something of a, of a, I think, a notion.
When you, when you went for the building permit, you, I don't think you show conceptuals there, do you?
It depends on what you have at that point.
No, why would you go to the building permit?
I would dig, you know what, I think the best thing to do is for me to dig up what was submitted on.
Well, I think you should know how a building permit works. I think I'm pretty familiar with it.
Yes, this is, we followed.
Get a building permit, you have a plan that you, you know, you submit, and then that plan goes to the various boards. And if you went to it with a permit on an application, and you have designs made, you know, and they're going to be submitted, they would, they wouldn't show something on someone else's property.
It says initial building permit application submission. That was for referral. That was a denial, and so that they can refer us to the right board. That was the procedure that we were following.
A submission to the building, for a building permit would show what, what the, what you or your, your client would like to build.
I think we're getting caught up on, on that.
Well, no, I'm not getting caught up on it. That's like, you can't go and just say that you're working on a conceptual, and that's how we're going to decide, and that's how we're going to look at this and, and how this all happened in, you know, the sequence in which it happened. If you went to the building permit for an application, you would have shown that there, you would have shown that there was no deck on, on public property, or else it wouldn't have gone anywhere. And if you didn't show that, I don't know how it got past the planning board or the, you know, the, you know, code enforcement officer.
There was a definite confusion of which board we should go to first.
Yeah, there is a confusion. Go ahead.
And so planning board reviewed for our use of change, or change of use, and they did tell us, you know, to go to the village, I'm sorry, the village board for sidewalk purchase. And we followed whatever we, we were told to do. So they first referred us to the planning board, and that's where we started.
But wasn't, I understand your jab, because I'm simping. Ultimately, it was decided we could buy the piece of property, the village property that the steps are on, right?
Yes.
And not the other stuff.
But that comes later.
Well, I'm just saying, we might be able to skip this whole argument, because then the building was designed, so the porch was not on the village property.
Right.
So it's kind of moot now, this other stuff, right?
Well, it's moot, except that we have an architect that's bringing plans to, that have designs on it, that she's asking it to move along, that has buildings shown on someone else's property. That's a problem.
But then it got pushed away anyway, right?
Well, I don't know why, I just don't know, it just doesn't sound like a way that you should be operating. I wouldn't bring a building permit.
We were asked to submit what we had in mind so that we can be deferred to the proper agencies.
Okay, that's, I gotta say, that's crazy, but go ahead.
But that's the, that's the.
That's, that's.
But that's the, that's the procedure.
It's, I have never seen a building permit that was conceptual and it's on someone else's plans going to ask, you know...
The very, let me say for the record, the very first building application on February seventh was for referral. It was for denial and for referral to other agencies. End of story.
No, the, a building permit is, is submitted to the code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer looks at the plans, and then, in every case, not just this case, in every case, it is then referred to, if necessary, to applicable boards.
That's what we did. We were asked to submit and...
And what I'm saying is for you to have, ask, to have, to submit an application which had to have a drawing on it of what you did, not a conceptual plan that is on someone else's property, just doesn't, that just doesn't cut it with me. It's just, that's, whatever. Go ahead.
We did because we were asked to submit it for board referrals. That's all we did. We, we were showing our intent. That's all we did.
Okay, so next time I want to go and do something, I'm gonna just show my intent and it'll be on someone else's property or whatever, and they'll refer it to another board. That just doesn't, doesn't sound reasonable to me. Go ahead, we're stuck on, on February twenty eighth, it's already not good.
That's what we were asked to do, and I was just following the directions. I was following the directions.
You were submitting as an architect, knowing how building permits work, an application that had buildings on private property, and that does not sound ethical to me.
Excuse me, I followed the directions from the village.
No, these are state, this, this is, this is how, this is state law, this is how, how it works, this is how applications work, and, and you knowing that, I don't understand why you would submit an application that had any buildings on someone else's property.
We were, we were asked to go to the planning board.
You were asked to do that. Before this even happened, they said, "Jewie, why don't you come in with some conceptual plan and I'll refer you to whoever we want to refer you to?" That's how they approached this? I mean, when you went to them, you went and, and just like any other building permit that is issued, or an application, you brought what you wanted to build. Correct me and stop me when I'm wrong. So you brought a plan which showed a deck on it, on, on village property, and you brought that, knowing that, to the building inspector and said, "Please look at this and approve or deny this."
No, we were asking for referral to other boards.
How can you ask, the referral doesn't, you don't ask a building inspector for a referral, you bring a permit to him and he refers it after he reviews the plan.
He denied, he, the first step, so when, when we have, let's say, a very simple project that needs to be reviewed by historic review board, we submit a drawing, what, whatever level it is, it varies depending on where our project, you know, how far we've gone along, but we submit it to the building inspector asking for referral. And they, he would say, "Okay, permit denied. I, I refer you to go through the historic review board." And then we develop the drawings further, and that, that goes through that process. And then, once that is approved, then we submit a real permit drawing asking for a building permit.
Okay.
That's how it's done.
Okay. I've been in the wrong business for forty-five years, I've never seen that. But go ahead.
That's how it's done, in this village. Oh, my goodness. Okay. So we had a workshop with Board of Trustees on April second, and then on April twenty fifth, we met with the planning board. I believe at that, we were discussing, so the note here is confusing me a little bit, but I think the, the second planning board meeting, I think we were getting a sense that the village board was not too thrilled about selling the sidewalk. But, but on May eighth, which was, so I, I'm sorry, I have to go and look at the April twenty fifth because I remember that it was still, the discussion was still open, and that's why we submitted the drawings to the HDRB. And so on, May ninth, two thousand nineteen, there was a public hearing with the planning board, and they made, they had, prior to that submission, they had asked us to just show, just, the side, they didn't want us to get tangled in planning board, so they had asked us to just submit what is currently feasible while we're working out the purchase of the sidewalk.
Who is this requesting this?
Planning board.
No, you just said the planning board. You didn't want to get tangled up in the planning board, so they, they...
No, they, they didn't want to hold us up while we're waiting for the, the planning board, I mean, it's a, I'm sorry, the village board approval of the sidewalk. So they asked us to just submit, just preliminary plans showing just that front, we, they said just to be determined later, at a later date.
So when it went to the HDRB during this process, which you just mentioned, which was around in April, I guess?
First submission to HDRB was May third. And they had...
So now, so which drawings, see, this is where, so there's, there's two, there's two drawings. There's a set of drawings that's going, that went to, I'm imagining, well, I'm totally confused now because I don't know which went where, but, so the drawings that we received last, for this application since it came to us, was showing, did not show a deck on the front at all, it had a solid front on it, and, and that was the one that was stamped by the planning board?
Yes, that was, that was from, that was approved on, I believe, May twenty-third.
Okay, so the planning board received, so the planning board and the HDRB are receiving two different plans, showing two different projects?
Correct, because the drawings were...
And why is that?
Because it was, things were still evolving. Yes, we, at that point, we were asking, you know, do we have to wait for each board to finish their process before we go to the next board? And they said, "It'll take forever, we'll just submit simultaneously," and that's why the drawing kept evolving as the project proceeded.
And so you think, you think that that, that, that's right, that the planning board is looking at a plan that shows something totally different, not totally, but a lot of, lot of changes, to what the, to what the HDRB's looking at? And, and, and that's because of this evolution that you're talking about? So the planning board's not gonna know about this evolution, although they, they're gonna approve this. And then you're going to another board with a different set of plans, with a total different look to it.
Because at that time, when I went to the historic review board, we were hopeful, at that time, we were still hopeful that we could purchase the sidewalk. It was not final...
Can you, I mean, I, I, again, that's, it sounds a little crazy to me because you're going to get some approval from a board when you don't, when you're showing another board that's giving you approval that you need as the first step, that, that's gonna approve something that's not what the next board's gonna be looking at, and they're approving that. It, it just doesn't all line up.
The, the reason why we did that was because it was taking very long time.
I don't care about how long it takes, it's, that's, that's not the way the process should work. A, a, the planning board approves a plan from, from, from drawings that you do, which then go to the next, should be, and if they want to run it at the simultaneous, that's one thing, but they should be looking at the same documents, and they're not, and you know that.
They asked, they, they allowed us to go to...
To show two different documents. Did they know there were two different documents?
The HDRB was well aware of it.
What's that?
The HDRB were well aware that there were two different, two different plans. They had a plan in May, they had a plan that showed the open front porch, and they had a plan that showed the, not the recessed front porch. So they had the two. They were informed at that time that the decision was based on the budget, the, the cost to the homeowner. So they were told that the preferred plan had the recessed front porch, but if it were not feasible financially, then the option would be to maintain the facade, the existing facade.
But the planning board, but that does, that doesn't relate back to the planning board. The planning board is, did the planning board know, well, we might not do this, and maybe we're gonna not do this or this? Because it has, you know, their plan, they're, they're approving a plan with no porch on and showing that, and now you're going to the next board and saying, "This might be how it goes, and this might not be how it goes because of, of a cost to the, to the client, and the client might not, you know, at that point, might change it." That's fine, but the planning board's not informed of that.
They were informed. After the HDRB had, had issued a certificate of appropriateness, they were informed, they re-informed the planning board at that time. So further along in the timeline, we've got August fourteen, there's a meeting with the HDRB and, and Jewie and a few other employees of River Architects, where they review the different facades to the building. It's then, they issue the certificate of appropriateness, and at that time, it's sent to the planning board.
Except that the second to the last row here shows a meeting with the HDRB, and what it says is, "The board," assuming here that it's the HDRB, "approved the originally proposed covered deck onto village sidewalk." And then under notes, it says, "Approval drawing set stamped on five twenty-two." So it, I read that as saying the HDRB approved on May twenty-second...
Right.
A plan that, that showed the entire front facade of the building being built out by seven feet onto the village sidewalk.
But I think it was contingent upon...
It doesn't say...
...purchase of the, of the sidewalk. But I don't think they approved or...
Doesn't say that it was contingent. No contingency, no...
They don't approve or contingent on it. I, I don't know, we...
I don't know how they could give a certificate of appropriateness on something when you don't even have the property, and it's not something that the planning boards knows about.
But we, we were very open with all the agencies that we are in the process of, you know, applying for sidewalk purchase. They were all aware of that.
What's distressing to me, and this is not something that, that, that is a comment on, about River Architects, but what is distressing to me is that it says that the HDRB approved the drawings showing a proposed covered deck on the village sidewalk when, when, I mean, it's stamped, it was a stamped set of plans, when there was no ownership of the property, as Dave points out. That's, again, it's not...
But I didn't do, I'm just following, because it was so complicated. I was just following what they were telling me to do.
I'm not suggesting you do, you did anything wrong here, but this says that the HDRB is approving with a certificate of appropriateness, a, a, a plan, a project, where the whole seven feet in front of the building is not owned by the, project by the applicant. That's a problem in, in the process that we have.
Right, but then it never, we never were able to purchase it.
So we didn't go forward.
This is, this is...
Yeah, I know, I, I realize what, what's going on, but I, since we weren't able to purchase it, the plan's changed.
Yes, but, but, but there is existing a set of drawings that's stamped as approved by the HDRB, and a certificate of appropriateness to build something on village land. That's all distressing to me.
Right, it is. But then, since we weren't able to purchase it, I guess you could say it all just disappeared, went out the window, I don't know.
So we, at that time, when we were conversing with HDRB, it was a concept that we, it, we had proposed just for aesthetic, you know, and, and the concept.
Again, I don't think boards approve something on concept.
I don't know, they, so, that's what...
I don't think they should be on concept. If it's not, if it's concept, then it's, there's not...
I think at that point, we were still, because there was some overlap, when we looked at everyone's schedule, and we, you know...
That's, I mean, the, the time and, and, and how that works is, is just totally a different story. The story is, I mean, what I'm looking at is like, I mean, I don't know, you're bringing something to a board, conceptual or whatever, that, that it's not even possible. I mean, asking boards, and boards are approving stuff that, I don't care about the fast-tracking and the time consumption and, and, you know, how that affects a client and costs, but, you know, to just be working on concepts and working on different drawings and, and one board's approving this, and, and, and you, and you know all of this, you know what's...
We were very open with each board that we were...
I don't know why you would go without first getting permission to build something on someone else's property with a conceptual plan. Why would you, why wouldn't you start by saying, "You know what, we can't do this, we should go to your client, we should go to the village board and get this, because if they don't sell this, all this time I'm putting in this and charging you, that is good, you know, that could just be out the window, because if they don't approve this, all of this decking and all of this facade, it's gonna be going to another board, and all the time I'm gonna be also charging you when I go in front of the, the HDRB with a conceptual plan, that's, you know, that could all just be going out the window." So why wouldn't you...
On March nineteenth, the village board minutes showed that there was a request to purchase village-owned property at Fifteen Main Street. During that discussion, it was noted, it was noted that no setbacks are shown on the plan. What is the porch and how will it be done? Does the applicant wish to build on this area? Interior of property to be raised three feet? Relocate, remove existing tree, which is problematic? A site survey and additional information is required before the board is able to consider the sale. An apartment is to be included on the rear second floor. Would this be a change of use? And this was at this, that was at this board on March nineteenth.
And we know that. Yes, and, and the board knew that we were simultaneously going for HDRB review because you had, before the sidewalk purchase was approved, you had asked us to show you what we were presenting to the historic review board because you would like to know what it looks like aesthetically. So there was that discussion. It's on video.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that discussion. And what we were shown there was, what you were requesting at the time was to build it, there was a solid facade, which is now where the deck is, and that there was a deck, a new, a deck that was in this plan, conceptual, I guess, that was on village property, and that's what we were discussing. Right?
I'm, I'm sorry, I lost track of what your, what your point is.
When you came to us, what you want, wanted us, and what you were asking for was to build a deck on our, the deck wasn't in, in your plans, conceptual or otherwise, as far as I know, until you came to us and showed us and said, "We'd like to purchase this property. This is what we're gonna build here, we're gonna build this deck, and this is what it 'll look like," or we asked you and you came back and said that. So before that, there was no deck there. There was no deck on this building, and, you know, before that point, you were coming to us to see if you could, if you could purchase the property.
I don't, I thought there was always a deck. We had always intended on covered, covered porch when we were asking to purchase the sidewalk.
Okay, go ahead, go, yeah, let's just go ahead. I just, it just like, there's a lot, I mean, what I'd really like is, you know, what we should have really done is gotta have the chair for the planning board and the chair for, you know, the chair for the HDRB here, so, you know, we could all, you know...
I think what would have been really helpful, if we could have determined who the leading agency was, and we weren't given that direction. We were just referred to all the different boards as the meetings came up. We had asked that question, you know, should we wait until, can we, can we, actually, we didn't want to lose time, so we had asked the permission, I said, "Can we simultaneously apply to the various boards?" And granted, things were changing as we were, so, for example, because we had to submit two weeks prior to a certain board meeting, sometimes that drawing got superseded by another board's meeting, so...
Jewie, you, you frequently said, "They said, they said to do this, they said to do that." Who's "they"?
It was, I think, either the building inspector, we had, we had asked for referral, and they, what I mean, they, sometimes they're at the planning board meeting or village board meeting, we have, I mean, we had notified that we were going for this simultaneously. I believe at planning board review, we had told them that, we didn't know who to go to first.
So you told them that?
They, it was various, various people, you know, building inspector, planning board. We made it very transparent that we were going for this approval simultaneously because we couldn't lose time.
Which, which is fine, but you can't go to every, to different boards with different, with different drawings and different plans.
But in that superseded, so by the time, by the time we...
I mean, I mean, seriously, I mean, we'll, we'll move on on this, it's just like, you, I mean, whether it's superseded or whatever, going to different boards with different plans and getting approvals for different, you know, conceptual or whatever, again, that's, that's, that's not how it should be done, and if that's the way it's done, then that's...
That's on us.
Whatever, yeah, so...
That is on us.
So I, I think what we're getting to, I, I mean, isn't, isn't... So I, I think what we're getting to, I, I mean, isn't, isn't the bottom line here, uh, we're, we're talking about the ramp and we're talking about where you should go at this point. I mean, I really don't need the, the history's kind of crazy and I don't have anyone here that's gonna, that can actually, you know, you know, actually confirm or, or deny what you're saying. So it's like you went to the, the planning board and they said, sure, go.
They were trying to help us move the project along.
I'm sure they were, but I'm sure that they weren't trying to help you build on, on the property.
No, that's why they said, okay, don't show anything on the, on the uncurchased sidewalk.
Right, that was a good suggestion.
But they said, make a note, the front of the building to be determining the future. So that was, that's on the planning board, approved planning board plan. Now, the, the important aspect of the history is that we did go back to the planning board, we emailed them updated site plan and the floor plan showing, um, uh, the latest plan that got evolved. And we add, we had asked-
This before or after they approved this, they stamped the approval?
So this was in August 22nd. They had, so planning board reviewed and approved our, um, initial plan on the, May 23rd.
May 23rd.
So after, so after the drawings got approved by the historical review board, with the building being pushed back, and we emailed our latest plan at, as of August 22nd, we had asked, um, do we need to go back to, uh, the planning board? And we did not hear from him. However, at around the same time, we had met with the building inspector and building inspector told us that building owner has the right to build what she wants on her property as long as approved by historical review board. And so when you look at the, the, um, uh, building permit application, I should say, there were three building applications.
There's no such thing as a building permit.
I'm sorry, building permit application. So there were three building permit application in this scenario. February 7th was for referral. And then in May, I'm sorry, um, in, uh, DOB, okay, submitted permit application requesting for phase one. So in July, because things were taking so long, Laura had asked, can we please at least get a demo permit? And then we submitted a different set of drawings to the historical review board, just asking for the demo permit. And so then when, so in-
That goes to the HDRB because this is historical?
Right, that was just, just for the demo.
What's the demo here?
Um, demolition of-
I understand what demo stands for.
Yeah.
But what is it that you are asking to demolish?
To demolish, um, certain, um, I have to go back. There was, um, removal of, I think, windows, certain windows. Um, I think demolition of flooring that was inside, um, there were just, I have to go back to the joint, but it was minor.
It seems to me, when you say demolish, I expect that you're cutting off a front of a building or a side of a building, or you're getting rid of a whole building. It's the term demolish that, that just was.
That makes you nervous, yeah.
Yeah, because I don't think you demolished anything. You, you eliminated the front windows, you moved the facade of the building to the south by a certain number of feet, installed new windows, you-
Yeah, I have to look at the drawings, but it was very minor change, it was minor change.
But I, I wouldn't, when you say demolish, I, I get a little angst.
Okay, I have to look that up.
That's okay, my, it's my problem.
So the third, um, building permit application happened in summer, uh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, the third building application happened in October, um, after we got settled with HDRB with the revised set, you know, after we closed on the sidewalk purchase. Um, and as, again, on, uh, August 22nd of 2019, we had emailed the plan, updated plan to the planning board to give them heads up of what was happening and what, how it all shook down.
Okay.
We did not hear from him.
So what were you asking them to do?
We were asking-
You sent them an updated site plan.
Yes.
And you specifically said to the planning board in your email, what are the additional steps that we have to go through? Must we come back to you?
Right, we had asked, do we, do we need to, uh, go in front of you again?
Okay, and you've never received a response?
We did not receive response.
Period. It's the yes or no question. You've never received a response.
Correct.
You've never received a response, okay.
Yeah, normally we would follow up with it, but at this, around the same time, we met with the building inspector asking for next steps and he had informed us that the building owner has the right to build what she wants within her property as long as it's approved by HDRB. That's why we didn't follow up with the planning board.
So the updated site plan that she sent to the, the planning board showed two things. Correct me if I'm wrong on this. Uh, number one, it, it showed for the first time the steps in the front? No, because I think that was, that was in the original, uh, what you, uh, the planning board approves a site plan for parking. Then the board asked us to board approve it, so I suspect that the, the stairs were in-
The second, the August, I believe the August, um, drawing had the, the stairs.
My question was, were they in anything prior?
No, because we didn't, at that, at that point, the, the May drawing, we didn't have the purch, we had, we couldn't purchase the, that portion yet.
You had, you had the purchase as of June 1st, okay. So the, this was the first time the planning board saw the steps, is, was in August. At what point did you change the, um, use from an apartment, which is what you went to the planning board for on eight, on February 28th, to a short-term rental?
Short-term rental was, uh-
The answer, the answer is 425.
Yes.
And so there was no need to review that change with the planning board because you already had that approval in April 12, on April 25th, correct? Yes, the answer to that is yes.
Yes, May 23rd, May 23rd, uh, oh, uh, I'm sorry, and approved the drawing stamped on May 31st.
Okay.
Yeah.
So why would you come back to the planning board?
Because we just wanted to keep them updated and we had asked, do we-
But what change was there to the site plan?
So the covered porch.
But, but that, that didn't, that was done?
But within, within Laura's property.
Correct.
Yeah.
So it doesn't affect the, the planning board?
Not to my knowledge, but, but then, and then also the front stoop that, that we put on the newly purchased sidewalk.
Okay, so that was the only difference, was the, you showed them that you bought the property and here's the steps.
Right, and then the, the back, there was one more thing, which was the, um, well, the, the plant revised floor plan, which they don't really, uh, review other than usage.
See, when they did your, when they did your, um, parking chart, they did an analysis of all of the interior space of the building and identified from that the number of, uh, parking waivers that you would need. Those are no longer there.
Well, it got reduced.
Yes, yes, so you paid for more than what you theoretically, you're using.
Right, I mean, maybe a couple hundred dollars.
Okay, you don't care.
Well, not that I don't care.
You don't care, Laura, you don't care.
But we could ask for a refund.
This detail, let's get to the litty gritty here.
Okay.
So what, yes, so, so where, where is-
All right.
So the issues, as I understand them were, um, the, the, the deck that everyone was so worried about, since it's on my property, okay, and-
HDRB approved it with-
We don't care about the HDRB approvals.
I'll do short-term rental, because I see Eric has to do that, fine.
Yeah.
Uh, and then there's, the only other things were a step in the front, it was the wrong height. This is such a teeny thing, but that's, was brought up by the building inspector.
Yeah, which is-
Well, something, I guess we could fix, frankly, you know.
Yeah, we're talking to them, that's within your property also.
That is a very small thing.
Yeah.
The ramp. We sourced out the ramp, because that's preventing me-
The steps, whether they're on her property or not, they're not conforming, they're in any-
Right, we have a solution-
Yeah, they have to fix the steps.
We have a solution within her property, we have a solution within her property. So that's not, I don't want to, we will come back to you.
I don't know how you change the height in that little bit of space, but-
No, we will come back to you if we need to go on to the village property, we will definitely come back to you. Now, may I read the email that explains how we got the ramp situation? Um, I, I apologize deeply because when we were trying to work out the solution with the building inspector, the new building inspector about the ramp extension, we had reviewed about dozen different solutions and it, it became so confusing. I said, okay, let's, let's do a mock-up. And, and I, and my deep apology is that I didn't think of it too hard because the board had allowed us to build our office stoop onto the village property and close on that later. So I thought, okay, this, if this is the only solution, I, I apologize, I jumped to that conclusion based on my past experience and I, and I, that's my fault and, and I'm terribly sorry for jumping to that conclusion. So that's how that kind of got tangled.
So the first, the first thing is, and what I brought up the last time, is you're talking about a mock-up, when it's not a mock-up, when you, when you put treads down and everything, that's not a mock-up.
The, the reason I call it a mock-up is that it can be torn apart if possible, so when I-
That's not a mock-up and that's not what a mock-up is. I mean, your, your whole building can be torn down, it's not a mock-up. This is, this, 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 this deck, and if you look at it, is built to stay. Um, it's, it's beautifully cut around the, uh, the pillars.
That's within the property, right now, what you're, the photo that you're seeing, that's within the property. Okay, so let me-
So when you could, but, but, when you got to this point, and I know this is really confusing, but, um, you know, you said that a, a lot of times, that it's confusing, but to me, as a builder in the construction trade, you would get the rise on the one side, or you'd get the height on the one side, uh, which is 38 inches about, and then you'd get the run, which I forget what that is, and you would determine if you can get the right pitch for ADA compliance in that. As an architect, I would think that would be very easy for you to do. This hasn't changed, the bricks didn't change, the height in the back didn't change. You told me that the, the foundation was built at the same height. So at that point, you had to know, as confusing as that might be, that, that this deck was not going to be compliant and it would have to extend further. And you shouldn't have built at that point, you should have said, we need to do something here because this isn't going to work. And, and that wasn't done. And it's not a mock-up, a mock-up could have been, let's see how this runs and you, and you run a couple stringers on there and throw plywood on and go, yeah, that's not going to work. You have a six-inch step in the front.
There was a question, so there were many discussions whether this ramp should be like a metal plank that's removable, um, just, just so that we don't have to come back to the village board.
But it's an HD, it's an ADA compliant ramp that was, that was, that you were told needed to be placed and hereby the planning board because of this new structure that you're doing.
Right.
So it's an ADA, that's an ADA compliant thing. You're an architect, you know what that pitch is, it's like one inch or less, I believe, per foot. And, and, and you look, and you look at this and it doesn't work. Whoever's measuring it, it doesn't work, it's not confusing, it's a simple part on the plan. And if it doesn't work, then at that point you should say, oh, what are we going to do? Let's see if we can buy the property or, or we have to go to the state and get a variance or whatever you have to do. There's nothing confusing about it, there's no reason why it should have kept going on, but it did.
Well, I, we had worked with the building inspector and we, we had asked, so anyway, so we were in daily conversation, not daily, I'm sorry, on, on a regular conversation with her about this ramp. Now, what, just wanted to explain to you on this diagram, but what happened was that, um, when you look at the site, it was, it was not easy to tell that the, the site was dropping off like this when, when this was not built.
That's, 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 that's really not an excuse. As an architect, you're taking elevations. You're taking elevations on what you're going to build and you know, you don't just say, oh, that happened, this was down lower. That, that's, that's just, that's not-
The site condition was lower than what we, what we had expected.
But the site, but site condition didn't change from the beginning of the plan in 2015 till now, it's still the same.
Visually, it was, it was not discernible.
You're not doing stuff visually, you're doing it by, but you're doing it with a transit, you're doing it by getting elevation. So you need to know what, how, how the, how the ramp's going to work, how the steps are going to work, how many steps you're going to need, how high the steps are going to be. This is, it's not rocket science, that's probably the, I mean, I can do that and I'm not an architect. It's like, so, you know, the ramp, that the bottom line is, this ramp, you should have known that the elevations didn't change on either side of what you were building and it shouldn't have been built. Or, or we, or, or it should have been a long time ago when this was discovered, then you should have came to us and said, you know, this is our problem, would you sell us this? Or you go to the state and ask for a variance. And that didn't happen.
So what do we do now?
I, I think you go to the state for a variance. I don't know how the, the rest of the board feels, it's like, that's an option? It keeps everything on your property? We didn't want to sell this for a reason and-
variance meaning it'll be a little steeper.
Yeah, it'll be a little steeper.
And, right, a bit.
Right.
Yeah, so it will, it will not meet the ADA requirement.
It won't, that's what a variance would be.
I looked at a Hudson House ramp, it's quite steep, I was thinking. I guess a wheelchair can get up that ramp.
Yeah, but you, you can't judge what you're building now with-
No, no, I'm just saying, somebody, a wheelchair can get up that steep ramp.
This is under construction and that's a problem.
I know, well, we're stuck, now we're stuck. It's either buy the property or get a variance.
It was done, as Juhi said, under the assumption that, well, because we sold you property on Main Street, that we were going to just sell you property on this, that was your assumption, that's what you did. When you first showed us the drawings, back when we first did this, two years ago, a year and a half ago, that ramp was, was fine. You built it in, it was next to the house, next to the building, you had a different doorway, you went back. So the ramp came forward and obviously doesn't, doesn't fit anymore. So I'm, I'm not an architect and I don't do construction, but I know that when we looked at it in the beginning, we were very clear that this is what you can sell.
So you don't want to sell the property, so we'll get a variance. I guess, there, there's no in-between, right?
So, um, I mean, it, it would be ideal to have an ADA ramp, I mean, that's more accessible. Um, I was hoping that the village board would be, um, you know, solutions-oriented, but, okay, so now, with, what we'll, what we're told about the state variance is that, um, the building inspector will have to come with us.
I, I talked to her and she said, that's not the case, so that's not-
What about, you don't want to rent me the, rent me that space?
Oh, what?
Uh, the village property that the ramp's on, could I rent it from you? I, I'm just trying to think of an answer here.
We just, we just don't want it extended by there and, and I think we made that clear why and, you know, and then allowed the things in the front and, which I all think came out great. I just, this isn't what we had thought of and not what we discussed and not what we wanted. So I think you should go and if, if they don't grant a variance, then, you know, we can go from there. But right now, I'm not willing to sell it, I don't think anybody on the board was, I don't, I don't know.
What about, no such thing as a temporary CFO? You know, you, I'll tell you what's going on. The, I, the lawyer that's been dealing with getting me the liquor license for one in here, he got an extension, then he got an extension, then he got an extension because we needed that. And now he's saying, he's not sure they're going to give me an extension. Just saying, he's, uh, he said if I got a temporary CFO, I could get a temporary liquor license. Until it got sorted, just, just saying.
So, I-
I'm, I'm being pinched on all sides here, you know.
So can you open your establishment without the ramp?
No, I don't, I mean, I mean, I'm fine doing that, but you have to give me the CFO that says that's okay.
Without a ramp?
No, we can't give a CFO without the ramp. We need a temporary, so maybe, I don't know, I'm not going to make any. I, I, I just think, well, while we talked to either planning and also a building inspector about that and how to, how to issue something like that, and what I would have done, if I was in, in River Architects' position a long time ago, was I would have went for that variance or after you had talked to us the last time. So all these days have passed and I don't know what it entails, I don't know how open they are to giving variances under different situations, but why, why not do that? And why hasn't it been done? Why wouldn't you do that?
Because we, we were told that it's difficult, so, all right.
Who's told, who told you it was difficult? I mean, I mean, why, I, I would just follow, whether it's difficult or not, at this point, it's, it's a necessity for someone that's being pinched from all sides.
So I have a, a temporary solution proposal. Can we, because, I mean, we have a very, um, uh, working ramp and, uh, which is- and, uh, which is need to address the, the last step on the front stair for, um, Ms. Charlotte, um, the building inspector. And, um, can we get a temporary CFO until we can get the variance from the state and we fix that? Can we, can we do something like that?
We have, we have to discuss this with the other boards and with our, you know, we can't give you that answer tonight.
It seems to me that, uh, if the village board decides to give you a temporary certificate of occupancy, we are implicitly saying that the ramp is okay.
The, the conditions are that we, we go for the variance. You can put that-
So, sorry, so, it, it, the conditions are that some point in the future, tomorrow, whatever, you go for the variance, which may or may not be, be granted. But it seems to me that if the village board approves a temporary certificate of occupancy, it is implicitly approving the location and the construction of the ramp.
No.
Implicitly, not explicitly.
But it's temporary because, it's temporary because we need to fix that.
Uh, it's, it's temporary, but you're going to use it. So there's an implicit agreement that it is acceptable.
And I-
So there's no temporary CFO if the ramp, end of the ramp's pulled up?
Right.
Because it can't be used. Right? Am I right about that?
Well, attempt, from what I understand, I, I don't know what conditions under which Charlotte considers temporary certificates of occupancy.
Right. Say the ramp isn't usable.
I mean, you're-
I mean, it seems like that's where you're going. If the ramp isn't usable, you know, we pulled that stuff off or put it broke or whatever. Then the issue is, and I think maybe Dave answered it though, but we can't open because there's no ADA access.
But we have a temporary CFO right now on the apartment. So that's the-
Yeah, but the apartment doesn't have to use the ramp. They, they can go up the steps. Well, I see what you're saying. Um, but she gave a temporary CFO because they, we can't have someone rented who has a wheelchair. I think it's because it's a bar that you have to have the wheelchair access. For an apartment, maybe don't, right? I'm, I'm just, just surmising. Yeah. Anyway, she gave me a temporary CFO for the apartment. And, and of course, the ramp wasn't even finished. So that was that, yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Um, this is a lot of history here. Um, but have you since the meeting, or your, your initial meeting with us, I guess it was last week, um, when you came to present, have you talked to or met with anyone from the planning board or HTRB?
We had emailed and submitted a drawing, you know, showing the difference between the very, like the May, um, 2019 drawing and, um, what's the-
And what, what is this one?
Yeah.
And have, but have you had a discussion with them? You have not met with them?
No, we asked them to put on their agenda.
Okay. So you were hoping when you came to us that we, instead of having to potentially go that route, that we would come up with, help you come up with a solution for what is already built in this moment?
Right, with the planning board, I just wanted to make sure that, um, we're hitting all the right points with the planning board. Just making sure that, you know, well, even though the building inspector said, um, you know, I'm giving you permit based on, on what I have, he thought it was fine. We just wanted to make sure that we're doing our due diligence with the planning board. So we just wanted their, um, input, approval, whatever necessary. But I know that the ramp is on the village property, right?
And it's, and it's not on what you sent to the planning board? Is that correct?
No, the, we did show the extension of the ramp.
They've shown it now since, but since it's been built, not-
Yeah. It's on the planning board agenda for this Thursday.
Okay.
And, and what is the, what is the topic that the planning board is considering?
We're going to have to-
I don't know.
The topic is that you have built something that doesn't conform to what they, what they saw. So I think they want to bring everything into alignment, which I think is by law, I, I understand it. But I, I think that those changes that were made need to go back to them for, you know.
But the only issue could possibly be a lot of coverage.
A lot of coverage, which will go to zoning.
Yes, they'll, they'll kick it over to zoning.
So my point, if I can continue, my point is that it seems to me, instead of coming to us now, that you, and I understand the pickle that you're in and the, the financial pressures. I totally get it. And I would love to see a wine bar. So that aside, um, that this needs to be dealt with by the appropriate boards to find a solution, not with us. Because I'm not, I'm not a zoning expert. I'm not an architect. And the people who need to be looking at this is the people that you need to be in front of to come to a solution that then we can figure out if it works for the village.
See, this is how we got into that original pickle, right? I mean, the-
I think you're, you're coming to us because you're talking about the original. You're coming to us because you were hoping we were going to say, sure, you can buy a prop.
That's right.
And, and that's-
Right.
Right, and that's, I mean-
And then last week we weren't going to do that. Is there such a thing, let me just ask a really stupid question. This is just conceptual. Is there such a thing that, like, on the end of that ramp, as you move it back to work along, there's a, a piece that can be put up and as someone comes with a wheelchair, you can manually let it down, let them in?
We discussed that and, uh, Ms. Charlotte, uh, mentioned, said no.
You can't do that.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Do you remember the ADA people that came here about four years ago and they were proposing that?
Yeah.
Well, they sort of know where to put the extra piece when, when it's not down.
That's true. Yes.
I mean, I think that was part of the problem. Right. Where do we, what do we do with that?
Where do you start that?
And how heavy it is and all that stuff.
Well, that's, I mean, there can be a lot of friction.
I thought if the step was little enough, we could just lift the person in the wheelchair and put them on the ramp.
Actually, they don't want you touching them.
I know. I, 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 I know. It just seemed like, you know, for the three people that come, I was willing to do that.
We went through this with-
We went through this two years ago when we talked about getting a lift. And with this first thought, we talked to them, getting a lift rather than a ramp.
Well, yeah.
And the lift was out of the question because of the flood. Yeah. Now, okay, so as we know, it's a, it's a very challenging site. What I would like to propose after hearing all of this, can we have a temporary lease on that portion for this TCO purpose? And then we can end that once we resolve it with the state or figure out the next step.
And I think what I said was we're going to need to talk to the other, I, I would like to talk to the other, uh, chairs of the boards to make sure whatever we're doing is in a conflict with them. And also to the, uh, building inspector and to see if that's possible and what, what that does for, for the future on this. What I think you should do, and this is just a recommendation and I would have done it for my client, was I would have went to Albany last week. I would have drove up there that day. I, I seriously would have.
At that point, it seemed like it was easier to ask to purchase.
But we told you that we were going to sell. We clearly said no last week.
Well, actually, I think I'm into that.
Well, well, we, we, well, number one, we're very grateful that you are considering it. Um, you know, at least for temporary lease. I, we're just trying to find a, a solution locally because a, as you can see in the photo, it does not impose onto the, the pathway. It is-
That's, that's, that's a matter of opinion. And what we, and you talked to us and we said we didn't want this and you know that. And then it's built on there. And right now, where we at, and I, I'm not going on any longer than this. We'll discuss this with the building inspector and other people. And if we can find a way to help Laura out and to, to get her into that place temporarily, I'll do everything that I can to do that. But this needs to be addressed. And it, and I think the only way that it can be addressed is either the business, the village sells the property, which we weren't interested in doing and I still don't think we are, or that you, you can go and get a variance from the state. I think those are the two options. So I would start working on those. I will, on my end, I will, I will see Charlotte in tomorrow?
Yes.
I will, I will be in there tomorrow and I'll talk to Charlotte and I will talk to Matt and I, and Eric Worth also if I have to on, and, and see where we're at with that before we move ahead.
Well, I, I mean, that's progress. Thank you.
But we can't keep saying that, you know, we're holding up and this is taking long and she doesn't have anything or whatever when nobody else is taking any action. I mean, like I said.
We, we discussed it for way too long, too many different ideas. Um, you know, we were just trying to figure it out.
But there was nothing that, it's not, this is, again, this is really, not to beat, beat the dead horse, I'm sorry. It's just like, this is not complicated. There's two things that you can do and neither have been acted on. And you're just hoping that the board will at some point, you know, break and say, okay, we'll sell you the property.
Well, be, because we were told that the state is a very difficult process.
Well, I'm sorry, it's difficult. It's not, you know, if it was, uh, if it was built properly at the beginning or if it was found early on in the, in the stage, then there would have been no problem or no difficulty because you wouldn't have had to go to the state. Maybe the building could have been built back farther. I don't, I don't know. But anyway, I will do my side part to see if we can get something temporarily.
May I say one more thing? Just, Laura didn't do anything wrong. Please, please just help her.
No, we don't think she did.
We feel bad that she's having to spend so much money, basically, with you running back and forth and all these things.
So just, uh, just so that, you know, she can open her business even with the TCO until we resolve this with the state, then we will keep going.
Okay, but even if it's a temporary and it's temporary, it's going to be temporary, then a solution has to be made. And there's two solutions. I would go to the state, no matter how difficult it is. If it's difficult, I'd go there as soon as I can because then it can be resolved earlier.
Okay, we will. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got another 18 items tonight.
Oh, my God.
Do you have that liquor or beer available?
I know. I have a great liquor license guy. I'm ready to go. Just beer and wine.
Okay, next is a approval hiring Matthew Jackson, a police officer. Um, we, were you, you were on that, right, tweet or roller, on the interviews?
I was on a interview, but I, I have seen his resume, seen the correspondence.
Okay. So we interviewed him actually twice, was before and again. And, uh, you know, Larry's recommending, uh, both Marie and I during PBA discussions where we talked to Vinnie Damato, who's an officer on, on the force. And, uh, you know, he gave a, you know, a good recommendation for this person. He works with him. And so, uh, it's a probationary period and-
How long is it? Is it 90 days, 60 days?
No, probation is two years.
Or two years?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's currently 40 months.
Yeah.
40 months.
Well, okay.
But Vinnie's, Vinnie's recommendation really addressed some of our concerns about, uh, the kind of work that Matthew does now. We're concerned that he rides around and doesn't, doesn't really interact with people. And Vinnie said, you have to understand the kind of people that live there. Um, they're very difficult. So, uh, he thought that Matthew would do a very nice job.
So that said, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of Matthew Jackson on a probationary period, uh, whatever.
I'll second that. Whatever.
It's going to, it's going to be tough. You're going to have to help me through the, through this. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next is the hiring of Kyle Van Tassel, a labor for highway. Um, highway person, uh, that we had hired recently, um, has left us, uh, kind of abruptly. So we're down to two people. Luckily, Tommy Hopper helped us this week on for garbage. And, uh, I think, I think Bugsy actually came down and did the Sunday run with Bob and was on the back of the truck. So he desperately needs somebody. Um, so I interviewed him with Bugsy. Um, he's local, our family's local, and, uh, and Bugsy's, uh, interested in hiring and thinks he'll work out. So again, he's on probation, uh, shorter than 40 months, but-
Six months.
Six months. But I'll, uh, I'll make the motion to hire Kyle Van Tassel as labor at $18,000 an hour. You have a second? And from tweets, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, update on Community Day event. I'll just be as brief as I can. Marie and I, uh, you know, one of our concerns is whether or not to have this. We had to notify the fireworks people. Um, we had a, uh, conference call, or not a conference call, a, was it a conference call? Yeah, uh, in the office this morning with, uh, Putnam County. Um, Kathy Burkicello is on there and along with Nesswood, is that the?
I can't remember.
The, uh, whatever, uh, with, with other Putnam County reps asking them, them what they thought of our event and what the story, how, how things were progressing or how things were moving with the COVID in our area. Um, they, you know, basically said they had only two concerns. One was face painting and if there was jumpy houses that they be open, not, not enclosed.
In the roof.
The roof, yes, meaning the roof on that. Um, and that was their main concern. Um, they cited all of other, uh, you know, events that are still happening such as Duchess County Fair. I brought up the Ulster County Craft Fair, which is pretty big. And there's a number of other ones that haven't been canceled. So a few have been canceled. Most are still moving on. Um, and that's, you know, they didn't have much else to say. There was a 22-year-old that died in Putnam County, COVID. They, I'm not sure which, uh, village or, or town. Um, and 30% I believe of the, uh, new cases are, are younger folk. So that's, that's a concern. But the hospitals, uh, you know, the only hospital they have oversight on or know about is basically Putnam Hospital, which this side of the county doesn't really use. So, um, the information on that wasn't really helpful. So that, that's about it. We're moving ahead cautiously, um, with that. And hopefully, um, I don't know, not so much I can say. Unless the people think, have a very strong opinion that if we shouldn't have it tonight, I can still probably cancel the fireworks and everything. Um, I feel we should move ahead and-
Was there plans for face painting?
What's that?
Were there plans for face painting?
Yes, I think there was.
Yeah, there was. So, which we can cancel that easily. Or they recommended that the painter wear a mask.
And that, yeah, and that, uh, the names of the face painters be recorded in the times in case there was a need for contact tracing. And that was, that was the only caution.
I would think to just cancel the face painting part entirely is-
What's that?
I would think that just to get rid of the face painting entirely.
That's an easy enough thing to do.
Yeah, that's easy enough. Yeah.
We're having a meeting tomorrow, aren't we? So we can suggest that. It's the same guy. So that should be-
I could do it.
Okay. Everyone else, strong feelings?
I really was looking forward to being, I did my face painting.
I'll do it for you.
Aw, thank you.
I'm a fairly good artist and, um, okay. So moving ahead, um, and then I'll give you an update as far as everything's at our next meeting. After this meeting, if, um, if there's any changes or everything that's scheduled and-
We have no meetings between now and Community Day.
Oh, we don't? Okay, well, we might have to. But, okay, then, then no update. The posters are out, banners up, uh, everything kind of scheduled. We have, uh, a couple more people have volunteered. So over the last couple of days, so that's good. Um-
Um, can you let us know, uh, like what the timeframe is for things for volunteering wise? So we can-
For what? Sorry.
For volunteering?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll do that tomorrow. I'll get a schedule with all the people's names on.
Yeah, cool.
See what we have and what we can do. And I'll get that to you.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, next is docking requests from Clearwater for, uh, August?
September 1st and 3rd.
Next Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I didn't understand this charter thing, Jeff. Scheduled is it to arrive Wednesday afternoon, education sale and charter on Thursday, depart Friday.
Well, the charter is either, it's either going to be school kids or they may have a private function. Someone has chartered to vote for a private function.
I know they've chartered for, yeah, yeah, for Westchester, like schools. I know they use it in the past.
Is that what it is? Uh, it seemed like, is, is this a money-making proposition? If it's a public service, if it's education, I'm fine. Because they get it for free.
Correct.
I don't think it's in, my understanding, it's nothing different than what they've done in the past.
Okay.
Which is the schools.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It says education sale and charter. I think that means in the same breath that the sale and charter are the same.
That's why I asked it, just wanted to know. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the dates requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Fun stuff now. How do we, uh, how do we condense this?
Just read, just read the sentence over again.
What's that?
Just read exactly the resolution.
Okay. We have a number of resolutions adopting local laws. Um, and we will, we'll go through them and I, I love that. Okay, we have a number of resolutions adopting local laws, and we will go through them, and I love that recommendation, so I'll follow that. So I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of Resolution fifty dash twenty twenty-one, adopting local law seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, amending chapter thirty-six brush grass and weeds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
How come we've never done this before?
No, no, we do have to do a roll call.
Oh, we need a roll call, sorry. Damn.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley, option. Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Thank you, Jeff. You need a grown up in the room every now and then. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-one twenty twenty-one, adopting local law eighteen twenty twenty-one, adding chapter forty-two fences and walls.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley, option. Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Yes. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-two dash twenty twenty-one, adopting local law nineteen dash twenty twenty-one, amending chapter forty-eight dumpsters.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley, option. Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-three twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty twenty twenty-one, amending chapter fifty-two flood plain management.
Second. Somebody's got it, over there.
Second by tweet.
Okay, Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-four dash twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-one dash twenty twenty-one, amending chapter fifty-nine, littering.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley, option. Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-five twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one, adding chapter eighty-one outdoor lighting standards.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-six twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-three twenty twenty-one, amending chapter eighty-seven, peace and good order.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. There's a little bit of a pause between your roll call, it's really hanging us up here.
Yeah, it's costing us a lot of time.
A lot of time, resolutions, one second for all of these, it's So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-seven twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-four dash twenty twenty-one, amending chapter ninety-three, recycling.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Much better. A motion to adopt Resolution fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one, amending chapter ninety-seven, sewers.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods? May Morandi?
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-six dash twenty twenty-one, adding chapter one oh six, deep slope protection.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. Next, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution sixty twenty dash twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-one, amending chapter one twenty-two, trees.
Second.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. What's that? Read this one?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number sixty-one dash twenty twenty-one, adopting local law twenty-eight of twenty twenty-one, amending chapter one thirty dash water.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. This last one, you have to read the whole thing.
What's that?
This last one, you have to read.
Yep, okay, we'll do.
Okay. Next is Resolution sixty-two dash twenty twenty-one, reducing the water and sewer rents for the American Legion Post two seventy-five. I'll make a motion to reduce the rates.
Second.
Okay, I'll read the resolution. Whereas the American Legion Post two seventy-five located at ten dash fourteen Cedars, or ten and fourteen Cedar Street, with a tax map ID number of forty-nine point five dash two dash three fours, assess two water rents as per one thirty dash one fifty, or one five E two A, and two sewer rents as per ninety-seven dash forty-seven A. And whereas the village board trustees may, by simple resolution, establish the assessment, and whereas at a meeting, the board of trustees on August third, two thousand twenty-one, the American Legion membership requested that the water and sewer rents be reduced to one each for water and sewer. Now therefore being resolved, the assessment for the American Legion Post twenty two hundred and seventy-five is reduced to one water rent and one sewer rent. And be it further resolved that this assessment is subject to annual review.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy? Trustee Woods?
Yes.
May Morandi?
Aye. And
I make a motion to approve batch sixty-one sixty-three in the amount of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of eight three, two thousand one.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh gee, that was
If there's anything else anyone needs to say tonight?
Let's do it again.
Wait, one thing, there was an adjustment in our American Care Act money, so we're getting an additional eight hundred forty dollars.
Eight hundred and forty dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
It's better than how the kids got eight hundred and forty.
That's definitely true. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
About a second. Everyone says
Sign in on that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Sorry I didn't make the discussion with River Architects quicker, but Jesus. Don't understand.